Seeing a presence of a quorum, I'm calling to order this meeting of the Regional School Committee on Tuesday, September 28th at 6:31 PM. And we'll begin with attendance. When I state your name, please, when I call your name, please state present. Mr. Demling.
Demling, present.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington, present.
Ms. Kenny.
Kenny's present.
Ms. Lord.
Lord, present.
Spitzer, present.
Mrs. Stamel.
Stamel, present.
Ms. Stancor.
Stancor, present.
And McDonald, present. I don't see Mr. Sullivan. Is that correct? Yep. Okay. And we have Ms. Kane joining us as our student representative and Dr. Morris and our recorder, Maylene Scott. Our first item is to approve minutes. And there's two separate minutes, but we're not going to look at the minutes from the 23rd. We will look at the minutes from September 8th. Were there any edits or comments from anybody? I'm not seeing any. So I will move to approve the minutes as presented for September 8th, 2021. Is there a second?
A second.
Moved by McDonald and second by Stamel, and we take a roll call vote. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Um, yeah, Harrington, aye.
Ms. Kenny?
Kenny, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
Mr. Stamel?
Stamel, aye.
Ms. Stancor?
Stancor, aye.
And McDonald, aye. The motion passes unanimously. And next up, we have a public comment. And we have a couple. That document is attached in the agenda packet online. And I will note that we received several voice messages that are pertaining the Fort River Elementary School in Amherst. And since this body is not involved with the business of the elementary schools in Amherst, I'm not including those in tonight's, in tonight's public comment. And they will be held. They're not lost and will be included at a future meeting of the Amherst School Committee. So with that, I will share my screen. Ms. Lord, did you have a comment? So as mentioned, just as a reminder, this, this meeting is of the Regional School Committee, which is the governing body, if you will, elected body for the regional public schools, which is the middle school and the high school. The elementary schools, whether in Amherst or Pelham, Leverett or Shootsbury, have separate elected bodies that govern those districts. So a public comment that is related specifically to elementary schools is more appropriately directed towards those elected bodies. The, the comment included this evening, it was addressed to the Amherst School Committee, but since it is on a topic that the Regional School Committee is discussing, that is why that one is included this evening. And with that, we'll move on to the superintendent's update. And I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Morris.
Sure. And since we met last Thursday, this will be quite brief. I have three things I'd like to share. One is just that my, our colleagues in Leverett are asking me to go to, and I will go to their Leverett on this topic. It's a good segue, Ms. McDonald. Leverett School Committee meeting on Monday evening, just to update them on the sixth grade conversations that have taken place on the agenda tonight, as well as has been on both the Amherst Elementary and Pelham Elementary School Committee. So I just want to let the committee know that I'd be with Jean up in Leverett, at least virtually up in Leverett, on Monday evening next week. So Jean, thank you for you and your colleagues inviting me up. I'm happy to come. The second is that this week, the state, yesterday, announced that the mandate for masking, universal masking, is, it's a little confusing. So I'll try to walk people through it succinctly, but it's extended from October 1st, which was the original date, to November 1st. However, in schools where 80% of the individuals in them, all staff, all students, are vaccinated, then those folks, if a local, you know, it's a local decision, but you know, districts have the option of changing the policy from universal masking to only those who attest, not prove, but attest their vaccination status can de-mask. You know, based on the policy of the school committee and my consultations with both our nurse leader, Robin Supranot, and the town of Amherst Health Director, Jennifer Brown, as well as listening to Dr. Fauci speaking about this morning, frankly, there's significant evidence, the CDC just presented more yesterday, that universal masking policies have contributed to reduced community spread and school spread. And I'm following those recommendations. So at this point, I'm not interested in engaging in changing universal mask policy. It's not going to last forever. So for those people who think it's going to last forever, at some point, we will not all be forced to wear masks inside our schools. But for the time being, especially as we head towards winter, as Dr. Fauci noted, it seems wise and prudent for us to continue with universal masking. And then we'll see where we are. I hope, for a whole host of reasons, the most important one is that, I mean, it's case counts have dropped significantly, that we're in a place sometime later this academic year where we can have conversations about shifting that universal mask policy. But in my opinion, and based on the evidence I've seen, that time is not now. We'll be talking about some other precautions in terms of vaccine mandates and things like that a little bit later on the agenda. But for, for me, it's the layer of mitigation strategies of universal masking, high vaccination rates, which again, we'll talk more about, good ventilation and distancing that has contributed to us to date not having any community spread within our schools. We've had positive cases. But to date, we have not had community spread, you know, that has been, you know, proven by contact tracing within the hallways or the classrooms of our school. So that's the second one on masking. So a whole lot to say. The state's allowing some flexibility in dates and it's a local decision. At this point, we're not interested in, I'm not interested. And I think we're not interested, you know, centrally in changing that policy at the current time. The last one is a quick update on pool testing. So it's been, continues to be a journey as it relates to pool testing. I want to thank our representatives. There's an article in the Boston Globe right now about our state representative who is really pressing on this topic. And I appreciate Representative Dom for all of her work. She's connected with me frequently. Tomorrow morning, I have a meeting along with other area superintendents and some state senators in Western Massachusetts, as well as the vendor that the state has chosen to do some problem solving. We're in a better place than we were a week ago. We now have a project manager from the vendor who has consistently been working with us. We continue to have glitches and problems, like meetings being canceled because their computer network's down, things like that. You know, so we are trying to work through them. I want to thank our nurses who are doing incredible amounts of work on top of the typical stressful job during COVID, trying to navigate this real challenge. And our hope is in the next short while, that we'll be sending, you know, permissions home so that families can sign up for this product and staffs, staff members can sign up to be involved in routine or pool testing. But I, like I said on Thursday, it's continued to take significant amounts of advocacy. And I appreciate that our elected officials, both state representative and state senator, have been in the front lines of supporting this. It does seem like a problem across the state. And it does seem there's some particular challenges regionally, from what I understand, out here in Western Massachusetts and the state vendor being able to provide the staffing. So there was outreach, you know, we are moving forward in ways that we weren't last time we were all together. It's still not moving along as fast as any of us would like, but it is feeling better that we're moving as opposed to a week ago where we didn't have a project manager from the, from the organization that stayed with us, kept on changing, and the person left the position, and you know, all of these kind of details. So I know that there's a lot of community interest in that. And it continues to be a challenge. And actually, the last thing I'll mention, I'll talk about a little later, but I think it is worth mentioning that I am in conversations, including just a couple hours ago, with folks who, in our region, who do mobile vaccination vans and buses, vans if it's not that many people getting vaccinated, buses if we have a lot of people. So we've been in touch with the town, but I think as some of these mandates that we'll talk about a little bit go on, and frankly, as the number of students eligible rises across all of our districts, we're trying to be ready with capacity to vaccinate and provide access for folks who, for whom getting to CVS or getting off-site is going to be a challenge. So you know, that vaccination piece, we'll talk about in a bit, but I did want to let you know that, you know, the access element of it is something we're acutely aware of. And on that last, that final note, next Wednesday, this was emailed out to all staff and all parents just this afternoon, we'll have a session with three local physicians who are, for the third time, willing to talk with us in the community, which is great of them. And they're going to talk about, you know, the safety as we get towards winter. There's a lot of concerns as there's more inside time, indoors time, as we head towards winter. They'll touch on some of the vaccine pieces, both, you know, that they're already approved, and then also the younger grade levels, and a number of other topics. And they'll have a Q and A as well. So you know, that's on our, you know, social media, our website. It was emailed out to all families this afternoon. And Carrie, thanks so much, because Carrie has been a really helpful conduit for myself to the local medical practices in the area. So thank you. And that is my brief update.
Thank you. Questions? And Ms. Kenny? And then Mr. Demling?
I just wanted to say thank you for continuing with the informational outreach and working to have more access for more people to be vaccinated, if that's something that they're choosing to do. I think that's great. Thank you.
Mr. Demling?
Yeah, and I just wanted to thank you for the management of the mask policy. You know, there's a lot of districts that went through a lot of real tough times recently in public meetings, a lot of school committees that went through a lot, making their policy. And when we made the motion last spring to give you some fairly broad authority to implement it in consultation with public health officials, that committee showed a lot of faith in you, and I think that you've shown that that faith is warranted. You've been very clear and very thoughtful about the reasons that you're doing it. And I'm really glad that you're staying in consultation with our, our health director and other public health officials. So I just want, I just want to thank you for that. We don't think about it, but it's, it's been a problem that has been really painful for a lot of districts in our state, but it hasn't been here. Part of that is because the community is so supportive of masks. But you know, your leadership on it, the policy as well, is appreciated.
Agree with both sentiments. Any other questions? Seeing none. We'll move on to the next item, which is Chair's update. We don't have an update this evening, so we'll move right along to school committee announcements. Are there any announcements or updates from school committee members? Not seeing any. So we'll move right along. We are now in, on to new and continuing business. And our first item is the student vaccine discussion. There are a lot of items in our packet attached to this subject. And many of them were included when we last discussed this topic. And there's a couple of new items that I'll call out. There is a, I think it's called two A, digit two A, T O, R S C ray student vaccines, which is an explanation in writing. We talked about this last time, that our role is to, is not to mandate or approve a mandate for student vaccines or not. Our role is, given the action of the Amherst Board of Health to facilitate the discussion of the timeline for when, when that will take, be implemented in, in our district. And on that topic, there's another new item. There's a vaccination timeline recommendation from Dr. Morris that is also attached there. And so with that, I'll let Dr. Morris explain both of those memos.
Sure. Yeah, I think the first one, which was just describing who makes what decision, was just reiterating, because I think, you know, got a little confused in some of the reporting, is that based on the policy the school committee has, it was the Board of Health that made a decision. We asked them, you know, I think the board, myself, the committee and myself, asked them to weigh in, not with, you know, what we all thought, but they're the public health experts. They weighed in and made a decision that the COVID vaccine that is FDA approved, which right now is only for 16 plus, but I think in, you know, it seems likely that in some not forever timeframe, it'll include the 12 plus as well, likely this fall, early winter, to include, add that to the required vaccines. And you know, when I was at their meeting a couple of weeks ago, they talked a bit about timeline, and then they, they recognized the limitations of the sort of logistics that would be required on this, and they deferred that to the school committee. So that's why there's a decision for the school committee to make, is the Board of Health made the core decision that it should be added, but really wanted the school committee and myself to be involved in the logistics and timeline involved. We did talk about timeline. There was some disparity among Board of Health members. And I think in that conversation, we learned just that it's complicated. And they didn't have all the information that I have or you all have around how our schools function logistically in terms of vaccines. So I think that was a wise decision by the Board of Health to pitch it back to us, and that's what we'll talk about primarily tonight. On the topic of timelines, I did talk to our nurse leader, Robin Supranot. And as noted in the memo that Ms. McDonald called out, there's a large number, much larger number of students than typical who are missing required vaccines. I mean, I was actually talking to some of the nurses this afternoon about this, and they were, they were finding for many of our 16 plus students, the COVID vaccine was all set. It was some of the other vaccines that had been missed because medical offices were closed for long periods of time. And catching up wasn't easy, right? We've heard this, this has been widely reported in the media, you know, including like a year ago, that there were all these kind of deferred medical visits, and one of which was, was vaccines. So the numbers are significantly higher than they typically are. Again, the vast majority of our students, 16 plus, actually 12 plus, are fully vaccinated. And so we also are sensitive to the fact that people may themselves be sensitive of having multiple vaccines in a short amount of time. And we wanted to sort of give nurses the time to support families, medical offices, the ability to support families, because this is going to be a pretty heavy lift for our medical offices, our pediatricians' offices locally. And in the nurses, and this kind of comes back to a conversation we had last time, but the nurses' opinion was that if there was one date where all vaccines were due, that was much preferable than having a typical vaccine, you know, exclusion date, and then another one for COVID. Just, you know, that, that was going to be really messy. So they recommended that we push all the vaccine exclusion dates back to December 1st to give folks a month. And it also gives us more time, because the COVID vaccine is a two-shot regiment that 16 and 17-year-olds are eligible for. The 18-year-olds have more options. It gives more time for us to set up clinics, folks to receive that, and it still gets us before the calendar year, which I think was, you know, I heard many pieces of feedback from this committee the last time we had this conversation. And it was supported by our nurses that they thought it was really important to have that done, you know, before the sort of holiday season kicks in. We know what happened last year during the holiday season, before flu season really kicks in in earnest. And so we came up with a date of recommendation for you all of December 1st. It would push all of the vaccine dates, you know, kind of exclusion dates back to December 1st. But if approved tonight, if this was, the body agreed with that, we would then send a letter out within the next week to inform families. And our nurses are working hard to identify which vaccines are missed by which families. And again, the list is really long, and it's because of the pandemic. It's not because of, you know, COVID's seemingly a second, secondary factor. They were noting, as I mentioned, is the number of student information sheets they had where the COVID vaccine was all set, but some of the ones that are more, have been more common were not, were significant. So it gives everybody a little more time to get, get caught up, both on the logistics, the paperwork, but also for families to get the vaccines needed for the kids and the medical offices not to be overwhelmed by this. And so we found like, we felt like it was a sweet spot of December 1st, but we're certainly open to feedback from the larger committee. But that was sort of the rationale and thinking behind the recommendation.
Thoughts? Questions? For Stamel?
Yeah, I, I think December 1st makes a lot of sense for most of the vaccines, but I have the same concern. I have a bigger concern with the next, with the adult vaccination timeline. But December 1st probably to me is the earliest we should expect all kids to get the COVID. If, if, if they need four weeks to get two doses, and then two more weeks to be considered fully vaccinated, that's six weeks, unless I have something wrong. So that means we're giving them basically a two-week, a two-week window to get started. If you see what I mean. And that, maybe that's reasonable, but I'm just not sure it's reasonable for everyone.
Yeah, so for us, for all of our vaccines, it's really, it's about getting the shot. So you know, with every vaccine, there's a period after the vaccine for full immunity to take place. So for all of our vaccines, COVID's no different. It would be receiving the shot and showing proof of that shot by December 1st. And Pfizer is a three-week window, so it's really about getting the first shot in early November and second shot in late November. You know, we would try to do a clinic next month and had some conversations, or clinics, I should say, two clinics, at least a first and second shot clinic. But this would give folks until early November to get the first shot. We wouldn't count the two-week window, because that's, we don't do that with any other of our vaccines. We wouldn't treat COVID any differently.
Okay, that's, that makes sense to me.
Thank you for the question, though. It's, it's an important point, and it's confusing, because you know, all the three of the vaccines have different timelines and, you know, and even though all vaccines operate this way, where you don't immediately become, your immunity doesn't, like, the shot doesn't come out of your arm and magically, miraculously, it's all set. There's so much more focus on the COVID that we're becoming more aware that, but that's a really typical thing for all vaccines.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Demling?
So thank you for going back and talking to your nurses about, about this. It makes total sense with the way that you've laid it out. I'm really happy that we'll be able to have a date before, like you said, the holiday and the flu season. So yeah, so it's, it's, it's good. I have, I don't have much to say about the timeline. Then it's, it sounds like a great plan. You know, and I'm just, you know, so before we just treat this as like an administrative, you know, vote on a date, given that this would make us the first district in the state, I believe, to have a COVID-19 vaccine, I didn't want to, I did want to take a moment to, you know, say two things. But one is, I've been really disappointed in our state leadership on this. Not just the Massachusetts State Department of Health, but Governor Baker, Education Secretary Pfizer, and Education Commissioner Jeff Riley, all of whom should be advocating for this. I know they're not health professionals, but it's their job to lead. It's their job to look after the safety of our children and our staff. And they're not doing it. And they're leaving it to, to local authorities. You know, we, we had to, you know, work, work together with our local Board of Health, who thankfully were courageous enough, I would say, given the level of vitriol that people who are moving on vaccine mandates are experiencing, and that many of our colleague districts are experiencing the state. You know, they were courageous enough to just look at this topic as a, as a scientific topic and make a determination. And I feel like if, if they can do that locally, the state ought to be able to do it, and there's really no, no reason for them not to. So I hope that this pushes the conversation forward across the state, because I would love to see vaccine mandates for students and other, not just our surrounding communities for our own benefit, but for the benefit of the greater good in Massachusetts. Would be really good. And again, I really appreciate the, the Board of Health acting, and acting so quickly. You know, we sent a message over, asked, just inquiring about the topic, and they voted the next day. So I really appreciate their, their pace on this to, to protect our staff and our students and our community.
Dr. Morris?
I agree with, you know, the comments. I just wanted to note that the, the Board of Health voted, again, just because it's a little confusing for some. The Board of Health voted last night. They reiterated the same vote. They looked at the language. They ended up making no changes and revoted the exact same language they'd voted a couple of weeks before. So I appreciate their care and thinking it through and making sure the language was exactly how they wanted it. And they ended up, you know, some people are like, oh, why'd you vote the same language? But I think it really mattered that they thought about it from the front end, as Mr. Demling said, voted quickly, wanted time, you know, thought about it, and landed in the exact same place to confirm that original vote. So for those of you who are following, the language that's on the memo is exactly the same as the language they revoked last night. Identical.
Yeah, and I just want, you know, we've said this many times, and I think, Dr. Morris, you in introducing this topic, said this as well. Throughout the pandemic, I mean, we're committed to providing a safe and healthy environment for all of our students and staff. And we, you described the layered strategies, and that's something that we've been, we've had since the beginning of the pandemic, really, in sort of employing this multiple approaches to layer our risk mitigation, to help slow the infection and spread of COVID-19 in our schools. The vaccine is now a really powerful tool to add to those, those layers. And I share, Mr. Demling, and your gratitude to the Amherst Board of Health for adding that vaccine to the list of required vaccines, so that we can add this really critical and important layer to our overall risk mitigation strategy. And I think just really grateful that we, we can do this for our school community at this time. Are there any other, yeah, Dr. Morris?
I guess people want to jump in, but I just didn't know. It was interviewed by a student at the high school, which was really interesting about this. And I did, I wanted to, again, invite, but not require, Ms. Kane, if she had received any feedback or had anything else she'd like to say. I know you spoke about this last time, but I just, you know, as it's directly related to students, love to hear your two cents if you have more to add, or if you're in the same place you were last time, that's fine. love to hear your two cents if you have more to add, or if you're in the same place you were last time, that's fine. But just wanted to put out the invite.
Yeah, I mean, I spoke to students and I got some new perspectives. Like, I spoke to someone whose parents weren't really, are anti-vaccine, and they felt that it would be difficult for them to get vaccinated. And, I mean, but I still stand firm in where I believe. Like, I think students should get vaccinated, and I think we should protect students. And I'm really glad that the Board of Health decided to move on this so quickly. And I really just want to make the school, like, I want everybody to feel safe when they go to school. And I feel like this is the best way to do it, so.
Are there any other comments or questions on the timeline before we move to voting on the timeline? I'm not seeing any. So I will move that we implement the timeline as recommended by Dr. Morris, moving all vaccine requirement to December first. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by McDonald and second by Stanser. Will not take a roll call vote. Mr. Demling.
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Kenny.
Kenny, aye.
Ms. Lord.
Lord of Stain.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer, aye.
Mr. Stammel.
Stammel, aye.
Ms. Stanser.
Stanser, aye.
And McDonald, aye. The motion passes seven to zero with one abstention. And now we move on to a related topic, which is our staff vaccine. The policy, we looked at policy last week. In the interim, we are proposing sort of some revisions based on the discussion that we had last week. And that is what is included in the packet on on that agenda item. Ms. Spitzer led the revision of this policy. So I'll let you, Ms. Spitzer, walk us through some of the changes that you're proposing.
So I I guess I wanted to start off with stating that I am very much in favor of vaccines. And so that I think they're safe, they're effective, and they prevent death and hospitalization. So my hope is that, you know, we reach as high levels of vaccination as possible as we can in our schools, but while balancing that with some of the the staffing concerns we've seen spread throughout the country, not just locally related to vaccine mandates for staff. So the the policy that you're looking at has changed in a few ways. One, we're we're still, it is going to apply to all school personnel and contracted personnel working in our school buildings. So there's no longer any language related to staff who are close contacts of students. It's it's broadened, broadened in that way. And then rather than having three types of exemptions, we have taken out all exemptions and permitted folks who are unvaccinated to continue working if they meet certain requirements. So they need to have, any employee who's not fully vaccinated for any reason will be required to submit proof of a negative COVID nineteen test, a minimum of once every week schools in session. And this is all, you can see this in section G of the policy. The COVID nineteen S must be a PCR test obtained and paid for by the employee or obtained at no cost through the district's pool testing program. And I'd also like to point out that there are, there's free testing in our community available through UMass that I've actually used recently and found to be very easy, free, and available to do at home, actually, and and available within twenty-four to forty-eight hours to get results. And that this potentially could be waived if we have short weeks. So any superintendent may waive this requirement in their discretion in any week in which there are fewer than three days of school. This is not the only, this would be a required measure, but the superintendent would be allowed to establish other mitigation and prevention strategies as outlined in section G. And then there would be a form that the district would create, but we've, the idea is that staff would need to sign it. And in theory, this could apply to anybody who's unvaccinated or chooses that they do not want to document their vaccine status with the district. So you know, I I wish that we were proposing, I wish that we weren't in a reality where where these, you know, changes needed to be made. But I I felt like with the with the exemptions that we had in place, that we'd actually potentially be creating more risk because the number of exemptions and the number of unvaccinated people could potentially increase without adding additional layers of of risk mitigation. So I think this is a nice compromise. I I'm curious what other folks think of this policy. So I guess I'll stop there. And if Allison or Mike would like, or Dr. Morris would like to add any additional comments, please chime in.
Dr. Morris.
Yeah, I just want to say I really appreciate Ms. Spitzer and some of the other committee members who privately reached out to me individually just to share their thoughts about this. I'm not going to call everyone out, but since Carrie spoke, I can, you know, do that for you. Because this is a complicated issue. We have a lot of, and I think you heard that from me, perhaps not as articulately as I would have liked last Thursday. You know, and I think this, for me, strikes the right balance. It's still is promoting, I think, vaccinations the way we want it to. And, you know, for folks, whether they would receive the exemption or not, and you look at other public employers, and there's a fair percentage of folks who do achieve or do receive exemptions. It puts in place mitigation strategies that, you know, keeps our schools as safe as possible. And I think, you know, I think ups the ante on them by, you know, putting it in more formal writing. It's not that my kind of original statement around K ninety-fives and distancing wasn't formal, but I think this is putting it at a higher level of a school committee policy. And I think it establishes a much more rigorous focus and accountability for for all of us administrators and school leaders and district leaders that I think adds to what I was trying to do a couple of weeks ago when we started implementing some of the mitigation strategies listed here. So I think the addition of testing makes a lot of sense. And as I mentioned, we're getting closely closer, not as fast as I want, but closer to having that reality realized. And, you know, you mentioned UMass, but I know many staff members have also gone to CBS and other places for free testing as well. So there are multiple options with different hours available in our community. For some folks, they may choose not to do pool testing because of however their beliefs about the nature of pooled and and what that means. And it's at the workplace, but still do testing in another facility. And that would, this policy thing allows for multiple options to get to the same end, which is routine testing. So, you know, I appreciate your work on on redrafting, Ms. Spitzer. Certainly, I'm curious where the committee is, but I think there was a lot of conversations that people had, you know, with me, and, you know, that's the way it works. You all can't talk to each other in the same way that I get to talk to you all. So I I received a lot of feedback from members of the committee and and not from everyone, so I can't speak for the group. But I think this strikes the balance that I was hearing people interested in striking. And, you know, at least at the broad brush, and I know people have specific pieces of feedback, I'm sure. So thank you for your work.
Yes, I I'd like to share a sort of appreciation for for your pushing this and and seeking a way, a way to provide something that I I I agree that this feels like a strong position and a strong direction from on our part, should we pass it. And yet, providing sort of a an alternate way for folks that really cannot be vaccinated, for whatever reason, to to continue in their in their roles while while maintaining sort of our high standard for safety in our schools. Dr. Morris.
Sorry, the other thing I want to mention, this really mirrors the policies, some statewide policies. So California, New Jersey, there's a number of states that have policies that at least look a lot like this. I don't mean they're exactly the same, but I think the the concept is is quite similar. So I think it's also not a uniquely Amherst kind of thing. This is something that it has been, you know, seems like it's working pretty well in in some major states and school districts that have implemented similar policies. Frankly, some in the summer, some states were way ahead of where we currently are in Massachusetts, frankly, to Mr. Demling's point earlier. So I I do think it's sometimes it's good to be, you know, the trendsetters, which the Board of Health got us doing on the student piece. And I think there's other times where it's also kind of wise to see what's working in other places. And the feedback I'm hearing is that this is has been successful in terms of a risk mitigation strategy and and not just local districts, but entire states across the country.
What are, what are folks' questions or comments, thoughts on this proposed revision? Mr. Harrington.
Yes, I mean, I definitely want to thank Carrie and and Dr. Morris for for working on this. The the part that I was probably like the least comfortable with was some of the the languaging in in that section before. But I, to me, this feels like the safest way to go about it. And I mean that, like, you know, health-wise, it's safer because, you know, we're getting a better picture as to what's going on. We know who's, well, we will know if somebody is unvaccinated and unsafe at the same time, right? Like, we'll get results from the test. But then the part that I was kind of struggling with was like making people prove their beliefs, you know, that that sort of thing. I I feel like that is kind of erased. And the other issue is like the matter of like retention. Like, I I wouldn't want, the one thing I didn't want to see is like somebody who's valuable to, you know, to our staff and, you know, to our to our students, you know, to our kids. Somebody has like great relationships, but has these different beliefs from me. Like, I unapologetically believe in the science and the data. I know that other people don't. And so so this makes it a lot easier for me. I mean, not that I was going to be, well, not that I'm against science, but this just feels more comfortable and more sexy.
Mr. Stammel.
I I really agree with Mr. Harrington. I I feel this strikes a really good balance. And I assume, I'm just, my question, I assume this makes it easier to implement for the administration than than having to go through, you know, exemption by exemption. Is that true?
You're making a lot of friends if you go with this policy in the Human Resources Department. And Human Resources, but yeah, I mean, the exemption pieces were going to be, on a serious note, you know, there was a great article in the New York Times recently about how to, you know, how places are trying to evaluate religious exemptions in the workplace. You know, Mr. Terry, I think you all saw, did work up some draft forms that we could have used in that domain. And I think as you look at them, you recognize, at least for me, I started realizing the complexity from an employment perspective of weighing in on that was, was was going to be very difficult for everyone involved. So I think you hit the nail on the head, Mr. Stammel.
Ms. Stanser. Oh, sorry, did you have a follow-up, Mr.? No, okay, Ms. Stanser. You're muted. Margaret, you're.
Sorry. I moved the cursor, I just didn't click it. Contracted, and number four, that where it says contracted service providers shall be responsible for verifying vaccination status. Can you tell us a little bit more about that?
Yep. Dr. Morris.
Yeah, so for instance, we don't have that many contracted staff. I mean, where it often comes up for food service, but as you know, they're in-house. But we do have some contracted providers. And so that what we'd like for, they are not employees of ours, right? We pay the contractor. So we feel like it's a responsibility of their employer to certify the vaccination status. We'd rather not get in the weeds of trying to verify vaccination status of people who are not our employees. It's just legally, it's a lot cleaner than if we're doing that. It's not that it won't be done, it's just that who does it feels like it's, if we're talking about employment decisions, it should be the employer of record, and we're not the employer of record of a small number of employees in the district.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Stammel.
So does that mean, will the same standards apply to the contracted? They will either have to be vaccinated or be tested weekly?
Exactly, yeah, yeah. Anyone who works in our buildings, absolutely. And I think that's one of the benefits is that we were struggling a bit with the language around very close contact. And then, you know, we were already hearing from some folks who say, well, I teach, but I'm never within three feet of a student. And we were having some definitional problems. To be honest with you, and this one is more blanket and, or it is blanket. And when we talked about as a leadership team, frankly, today, we saw a lot of value in having blanket language as opposed to language that was going to apply differently for different groups of employees and who is going to make that decision. There was a lot of, a lot of factors. And and I'm not trying to critique the other, the the other draft. People worked really hard on that. But I think from an operational point of view, it's going to be very difficult.
Mr. Demling.
So, yeah, I mean, plus one to almost everything everybody else has said in terms of the work. I also want to appreciate and thank Ms. Spitzer for speaking up last week and sharing her view when it seemed pretty clear that she was in the minority. And I want to thank Ms. Kenny for suggesting that we punt on this for a few days, that we could think about it. And I agree with almost everything Mr. Harrington said about, this feels like a better solution because it feels like it's going to achieve a safer environment. You know, if if we implement it effectively. And, you know, it it's not like we're doing, we're getting rid of the exemption discussion because we wanted to avoid a hard discussion, you know? I think we all respect everybody's beliefs and principles, and we all want to save schools. It's about how do you get there, right? So I I think this is a really good synthesis of the points of view that were expressed last meeting, which I think is particularly important in school committee more than other boards, where we we represent all, all of us represent the same public, same constituency. Even if we come from different towns, you know, like, I come from Amherst, but I still feel like I represent and and am accountable to those in Leuven and Chutesbury because I make decisions that affect their children. So, but anyway, I I I think school committees are are more collaborative than than most, or should be, at least, and expressive of of one view. And so I'm I'm glad, really glad at this progress. I do have several detailed questions on the implementation. So I I would like to vote in support of this, but I I do have some details I have wondering about. So my first question is, so the scope says it applies to all staff working in the buildings. And then in policy A1, it says applies to all school personnel who work with students in the building, which would be a smaller subset. So I don't know if that was unintentionally left in there, the with students phrase. So that that was a question. My my suggestions for making this a little stronger, and I don't know where people are at on this, so this is why we're here to discuss it. One is in section E, if the employee fails to be fully vaccinated or follow the additional measures, they may be subject to termination. I would like to change that to will be subject to termination. All that says is that termination will be on the table, it will be considered. Doesn't mean will be terminated. And and I just think it makes it clear that that if you don't follow the measures, then that that is going to be part of the discussion. The other section that I I thought we could work on a little bit is the very last paragraph, where it says, in addition to the the testing requirement that is outlined just previously, the superintendent may establish additional prevention measures. And then it goes on to talk about the K ninety-five, KF ninety-four masks and the ten feet when drinking and and other couple of other measures there. And so technically, if the district wanted to, the only thing that would be required is the testing. And practically speaking, I have no reason to believe that Dr. Morris is going to start willy-nilly not doing the things that he's already done, right? Staff, on staff who are not vaccinated, already required to wear the KF ninety, K ninety-five or KF ninety-four mask. But I I would like to maybe update this to something like the superintendent shall establish additional prevention and control measures. Shall establish the additional, the following measures. And then we line item with the following ones are, and then we had a sentence saying the superintendent may add additional measures at at his discretion or something like that. So something so that the the minimum requirement that we can promise to the community, right? That is definitely going to be applied is testing and then a few of the other measures that we we all agree on.
Thank you. Ms. Ms. Stanser and then Mr. Stammel. Oh, you took your hand down? Okay, Mr. Stammel.
Well, I respectfully would disagree. I I would rather just keep keep the language as it is and allow, that to me is implementation that the the administration should take care of. And that there, you never know what kind of situations. I'd like to give Dr. Morris and the administration the flexibility to deal with whatever issues come up. So I'm comfortable with the language as it's written.
Ms. Stanser.
I agree with Mr. Stammel. I think, you know, we got ourselves into a little bit of a bind in the past when we were very explicit. in policies having to do with COVID. And I think that we should give Dr. Morris the scope to make those decisions. I think he's shown that he's capable of doing that. And I just, I'm concerned that we're going, we will ride ourselves into a place that we really don't want to be somewhere down the road.
I'll just add, add to that. I, that, for the same reasons that Ms. Dancer just outlined, we don't want to write policy that's public health policy or public health risk mitigation, sort of health strategies into our school policies. And, you know, for all we know, maybe, you know, a year from now, KN95s, KF94s are not going to be the, the gold standard in terms of masking. And there might be a new one. And yet we've sort of written into our, into our policy, the specific one. So I share sort of the desire to leave that, that room for the superintendent in their discretion to apply multi-layered mitigation strategies or, sorry, infection prevention strategies for staff who are not not vaccinated in addition to the weekly testing. I feel like the language that's in this draft right now strikes that balance of showing the specifics that are already in place and leaving that room for flexing, flexing should guidance, health guidance and public health guidance and in terms of best practices evolve. That said, some of the other language changes that Mr. Demling suggested, such as removing, potentially removing that with students qualification in the scope and in section E, changing from May to will be subject to termination. I'm supportive of those changes. It's just that latter one in section G that I'm questioning. Mr. Mr., sorry, Dr. Morris, did you have a?
Yeah. So I won't weigh in on the section G one that's certainly really for the committee. I agree with your comments about the first two suggestions we should have made. I just think the with students should certainly be removed because, I mean, that would, you know, for instance exempt like central office staff. And there's nothing that's a worse modeling than have a rule that doesn't apply to people in leadership positions at district level. And we've implemented that. I mean, right, like we have these things in place here, but I think, I think it's really important that it's universal for anyone in our school buildings and not have, you know, and I know that wasn't the intention, Ms. Spitzer, and I missed it because you shared a copy with me and I, I didn't catch it. So I agree with those suggestions. I think the other thing, oddly enough, and I've looked at this today, that is just where this sits because it doesn't sit with letters as a policy. So just like organizationally, and maybe that's not a big point, but just if it's, if it's a policy, capital P policy, then we should probably assign it letters so that it can go into the policy manual. Even if it's something that, you know, the world is a better place a year from now and we're rescinding, you know, that happens with policies from time to time. But just, you know, right now I look at it, it says policy multiple times, but it doesn't look like a policy at the top. So if you're all going to talk, I can look at where I think it might get located or the committee might be able to defer that, pass the policy and then work on that. But it just, I know I'm going to get asked around where that sits. So sorry about that. I'll stop.
Um, the policies committee did talk about that and apologies that it didn't get added into this one, but we have a model policy. There was a policy that we included in one of our first conversations. It was from Newton. And that, so we would use those same policy letters on that Newton policy. Don't recall offhand what that was, but but we will be sure to include it so that it gets added to the policy manual in sort of the templated way. Ms. Kane, did you have your hand up? No. Mr. Demling.
Yeah. So I appreciate the comments on section G. So I'm happy to vote on it as is. The other question I had that I wanted to get a sense of where the committee might be and, and also if this is, if there are any practical implementation obstacles is, so we talk, we do spell out the, the testing regulation, right? As once a week, I know that, you know, the, twice a week, if you're not vaccinated is, is the preferred method, you know, preferably on non-consecutive days. So in an ideal world, I would, I would like this to be tests twice a week on non-consecutive days. You know, I, I can imagine that variables of that to consider would be, is it, is it too much to ask of the employee? Does it significantly increase safety? Is, are there practical implementation considerations that Dr. Morris might be aware of at the district level?
Dr. Morris.
So I think given the challenges we're having with the state vendor of getting testing once a week off the ground, I think if we're thinking about twice a week, it would, we, I'm not optimistic that we could offer that onsite. That we'd have an onsite option for two times a week. I'm not suggesting that people can't go offsite. I think that's a more complicated conversation you all could have, but I want to just share the limitations on our end would be that the pool testing could be done onsite once a week, once it's up and running. But I don't think more than once a week is feasible in terms of what the state is supporting us to offer.
Other thoughts on that? I think I would be concerned, and maybe that's too strong of a word, but I would, I would question sort of feasibility for some of our staff to be able to do that. And that may become sort of more burdensome for the increment, you know, overly burdensome for the incremental safety that that might provide. To be able, particularly if we can only facilitate once a week cool testing onsite than that, then we're basically writing into policy the requirement that staff will need to go offsite at least once a week to, to secure that, that extra testing, just to keep their jobs. And I, that doesn't feel good to me. Mr. Stamo.
To me either. I think it's really unreasonable. I don't think it'll add much safety and it could potentially drive, just drive some teachers away. It's just a big burden to ask. You know, I want everybody vaccinated, but you know, I think once a week, we can trust will be providing a lot of safety.
Other, other thoughts or comments? So I'll just summarize, I'm hearing general agreement to the two minor edits, well, the third one naming, yes, GB, thank you, Ms. Kenny. We will name this policy, policy GB as in boy EF. So that's one edit. The other tweak is in section A, we will remove the phrase with students so that it reads just working with, working in our buildings. And I'm sorry, I didn't read that. Who work in our school buildings will be the resulting phrase. And in section E, change from May to will, so that that last sentence reads, if the employee fails to be fully vaccinated or follow the additional mitigation measures, they will be subject to termination. And I'm hearing there sort of general consensus to not edit to leave section G as is. And I think the one remaining question, but again, I think I'm hearing also general consensus not to make it more than once a week, but keep it at, at least once a week. Which does leave the door open if we are able to facilitate and health dictates that twice is even better. That does leave the room for that as well. Is that sort of where? Does that summarize sort of folks' understanding of what the edits that we're making to this? Seeing general agreement and Ms. Dancer, sorry.
Oh, sorry. I maybe jumped the gun. Would you like a motion?
I was just going to ask if they're able to, to vote on this. So go ahead.
I move that we accept this, the policy on staff vaccination as amended.
I'll second. Is there, that was moved by Dancer and seconded by McDonald. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Mr. Demling.
I just want to save the record. So I think this is an excellent policy and I, I really appreciate the discussion that we've had as a committee. It's, this is not the ideal policy. I personally would have written with every detail. But I, I want, but I'm one of a committee of nine. And I feel like, I feel like, feel like my, my input has been, has been very respected and considered. And, and I'm very happy that we got to this place over the last few weeks. It feels much better than, than where we were at last week. And, and I'm also happy that it's, I think it's a more practically safe plan. I think it keeps students safer than, than what we would have otherwise done. So I just, again, want to appreciate what Ms. Spitzer and others have done to enhance this.
Any, any further discussion? Seeing none, and we'll move to the vote and the motion. Mr. Demling.
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Kenny.
Kenny, aye.
Ms. Lord.
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer, aye.
Mr. Stamo.
Stamo, aye.
Ms. Dancer.
Dancer, aye.
And McDonald, aye. The motion passes unanimously. And next up is our possible, discussion of the possible sixth grade move to the middle school. And this evening, and just as a preview, there's no, no vote or decision that we will be making this evening. This is more for us to have a discussion and share the conversations and discussions that have been happening in our towns and elementary districts. So the Amherst School Committee has had multiple community forums during, during its school committee meetings to hear comments and feedback and input from the community. There is also a survey that the Amherst School District shared with, with families to collect additional input. So there's multiple and, and we've been swamped with public comment as well as non-public comment email and, and feedback sharing on that from, from the town of Amherst. I think in the town of, the Amherst School Committee is meeting next week on Tuesday to, to continue the discussion and potentially vote on its decision on whether to move the sixth grade to the middle school. And I'm going to look to my colleagues from Amherst to see if there's any other updates or synopsis that you would like to share from the discussion that that committee's been having. And now I'll look to our colleagues from other towns if they have updates to share, Ms. Kenny.
I actually just have a logistical question first. So if any town is interested in having their sixth grade moved to the middle school, wouldn't they need regional approval to house said sixth graders before voting whether or not they're going to move their sixth grade somewhere?
Yes, yes. Sorry, I should have before, we should have talked through the process. Dr. Morris, did you want to?
Yeah, I was just going to walk folks through. So we had an initial conversation with this body a while back and there was general consensus that this group was not committing its elementary colleagues or cohorts to anything, but that the, the region was open to the door, was, the door was open for the region. If any elementary district or districts were interested in walking through it, it's not a formal vote, but we didn't want to even go down, having the conversations at the elementary districts if the region was an absolute no. So at this point, I think I can do this without dripping anything. So in Amherst, we've had two public forums, as Ms. McDonald said, lots of public feedback and and there's a vote scheduled at a meeting, at a posted meeting, a meeting that has already been posted, I should say, for a week from tonight to potentially vote to move the Amherst sixth grade students to the middle school. The recommendation that I made, I won't speak for the committee's response to it, was in the fall of 2023. If that motion passes at the Amherst level, I think we will need to come back to it at the regional level for the reasons that you indicated, Ms. Kenny. At the Pelham School Committee, I indicated my recommendation for the Pelham School was that there's not the same urgency in Amherst in terms of building project or space, that we maybe come back to the decision once there are more variables known from, you know, particularly from the town of Amherst, which has kind of a quicker decision point because of external factors and some internal factors too, frankly. I'll be in Leverton on Monday. I'll find out what Mr. Stamo and his colleagues are thinking. I think Mr. Sullivan reported last time that Chutesbury had had a conversation and at this point wasn't inclined to move forward, but also wasn't inclined to stop any towns that were interested in having their sixth graders move to the middle school. So, you know, from a process perspective, I think Amherst has some time sensitivity to be voting on something. If any town does, then it would need to come back to the region. That could happen as soon as the next region meeting on the 12th. I think the additional process perspective is if any towns do, I'm just going to say Amherst because that's the one we're talking about here. So I'm just, I'm just not going to be funny about like, if Monday Gene surprises me and his colleagues are like, don't, Leverton's on board, I will say mea culpa the next night and, you know, apologize to my Amherst colleagues for thinking wrong about that. But if, if they do, it's likely going to be kind of a commitment from the region, one way or the other, to work on some of the logistics over time. I don't anticipate us bringing to the region, all four towns, change to the regional agreement because one or two towns want to send their sixth graders here. They did talk to legal counsel and, you know, eventually we would need to codify that in some more formal ways. But if it's, you know, the beginning of a process, you know, a rental agreement for space and, and things like that can be worked on over time. So from a process perspective at the region, you're sort of in the place of waiting for elementary districts to make, district or districts to make a decision. When that happens, considering the elementary district's decision, it would need a formal vote of the region to allow for a member town to send their sixth graders. But I think a lot of the logistics of what a rental agreement exactly would look like would be, you know, something done over time within the regional school committee. And then the sending district, it wouldn't need to go to a four town meeting or a vote of the revote of the regional agreement for that to happen to get off the ground. I think, you know, our council has indicated over time, you'd want to formalize some things, but it's not needed immediately. Does that sort of help from a process perspective? Because I'm sorry, I probably should have raised my hand and started with that at the beginning. My apologies.
And I apologize as well because I even, this, as recently as this afternoon, was thinking the same thing that we needed to start with process. And then I just ignored my own thinking. So apologies. And Mr. Stamo.
Yeah, I was wondering if anyone on the Amherst School Committee is privy to share, is allowed to share what the feedback basically has been from the Amherst community. Has, is it 50/50? Is it overwhelmingly positive? Is there any way to categorize the feedback you've been getting?
Mr. Demling.
So this is just my take on it. Other committee members, feel free to jump in. So it's been overwhelmingly supportive of the, not, not 100%, but overwhelmingly supportive of the move itself. Most of the recent discussion has been around timeline. There's, there's an additional, in addition to the, the MSBA project dependency, which is a major dependency in Amherst. There is, there's also happens to be a space crunch at two of our, three elementary schools that related to COVID. That moving the sixth graders to the middle school would help alleviate. And so initially there were discussions about, well, this, this might be for the fall of 20, September 22. The, our last meeting superintendent recommended September 23. So we haven't made a decision yet and we haven't had a full on discussion. That's, that's Tuesday. But most, most of the
Um, but most, most of the dis- discussion has been around timeline and also um, you know, concerned that we have enough time to plan a thoughtful model uh for sixth graders and that we engage the community so that we can determine major things like how integrated into the rest of the middle school would the sixth graders be? Would they be completely isolated in their own wing? Um, would they share some of the classes but not all? You know, how, how do you, how do you work that? What's most appropriate? There's lots of examples across the state because it's six to eight is the most common uh grade configuration. In Massachusetts, we're, we're a bit of an anomaly. Um, so uh, so that's where most of the discussion has been. Um, but we, but it's, it's so far, it's been we haven't, you know, Tuesday is really where the school committee has the opportunity to say, okay, we've heard everything. Now let's have the discussion, see where we're at and possibly vote. Think that's fair to everybody else?
And um, nice job walking the line of not talking about um only, only stating the facts. Other um comments, questions that folks want to share from Leverett or Pelham?
We, we'll be discussing as Dr. Morris said, next week.
And just as, um, oh, Ms. Kenny?
I was just going to say that uh when we had our discussion in Pelham, I think there was general consensus of following Dr. Morris's recommendation of um postponing the topic for a while. Pelham doesn't have um any crunches the same way other towns might. Um, so we're going to kind of sit in our wait-and-see hold pattern.
So we'll be um coming back to this potentially on um October twelfth, which is our next Regional School Committee. I will say that's, that's pending the vote um and decision in the Amherst School Committee, which is on uh Tuesday, October fifth. Ms. Kenny?
Um, so when we're thinking about this from our regional perspective, rather than our elementary perspective, what is it that we are looking at? Right? Like, so are we are, I'm, I guess I'm struggling with how to think about this, right? I'm, I feel pretty solid on my thinking about it from my elementary school perspective, right? But as a regional member, what, how, how what are the parts and pieces that we are looking at, right? Um, so so like there's the, what, what the educational part would look like? I, I, I don't know. I'm just, I'm confused about how to think about this. Um, from, from the regional standpoint.
Dr. Morris?
So it's confusing. So it's not just you. Uh, I want to note that uh I'm not going to go down a regionalization discussion, but you know, we're in a complicated bureaucratic and governance system that often doesn't lend itself to clear, smooth runways for major decisions. So I want to just put that out because I don't want anyone to perceive that uh this is, this is uh straightforward and easy. From my perspective, I just speak for me, I think the three things that I think about is one, just ensuring that there's enough space for all students that it doesn't negatively impact the seventh and eighth grade students in the regional schools. Uh, I think there's a lot of work that's been done on that, but I think as a regional school committee, you should be coming back and asking me and other leaders, where are the sixth grade, if this happens, I'm going on that assumption because it don't happen. There's no conversation to have, to have. Um, where are the seventh and eighth graders going to be? Where are they going to be located? Where are the sixth grade, you know, right? So I think there, there's some, some, some real questions that you should be asking along the way. Uh, I think a second perspective would be what's the educational model, even though that may not be totally a regional item. Um, if, if the rental agreement happens because the member towns would still own the students, the teachers and, and the responsibility. Uh, I do think, you know, one of the reasons frankly that places do go six to eight is to have more continuity. Um, and so I, I think there is a place for the regional school committee to be involved in how this would influence the seventh and eighth grade experience, especially in the likely scenario where if we move forward, it won't be all towns at once. So, you know, I think the region would want to know, well, what does seventh grade look like if you are not in the middle school in sixth grade? Right? And are some students going to have more exposure to language? And if the answer is yes, how do we, how do we do that? And, and again, I think I've mentioned this before, but my colleague Jennifer Culkeen, who, you know, Mr. Stamo knows very well, they have this exact scenario with one of their elementary schools up in uh Union Twenty-Eight that could send students in seventh grade to a grade six to eight middle school in another community. So I think that we have a lot to learn about that. Uh, but what I heard from uh from Superintendent Culkeen is absolutely it's doable and it takes some coordination and work. Right? It doesn't just like magically happen. So I think from, from the regional perspective, I think that's a second area of focus. And the third, I think would be, how does a rental agreement all work? Right? And so um there's logistics, there's finances uh on that front, and I think the regional school committee should be uh involved there. So there may be other ways, but for me, those are the three things I think about uh when I think about the regional school committee's role in any change that might happen for one or more committees. I hope that's, that's helpful.
I found it helpful. Um, any other uh questions? Mr. Stamo?
I just want to be, I want to thank Ms. Kenny for being so honest about not understanding things because I'm in the same boat and uh I just like how you just put it out there.
Excellent. Unless anybody has any more to add on that. We'll move on to the superintendent goals guidance, um which we discussed uh at our last meeting on Thursday. Um, there is uh, it's attached again um in this document, um, I'm sorry, in the agenda. The subject of conversation last time was revolved around the, the, the project, if you will, related to the topic that we just discussed, which was um uh, um, uh around sixth grade and the middle school and what is, what is really the work from a regional perspective? Um, that might be a goal uh related to that. So that is um I'm just looking to see if these, if the highlights went through. Yeah, okay. So if you look, if you're looking at the document um that's shared, you'll see that some sort of yellow highlights that are the tweaks that um based on the conversation that we had last week. So sixth grade removed the Amherst, the Amherst School Committee and Amherst District um phrase that was really around the decision on whether to move sixth grade and really focused exclusively uh this, this description focused it exclusively on sort of what is the regional perspective on that? Um, which I think, you know, Dr. Morris just described. Um, the, there was co- talk uh last time about um incorporating physical wellness, um so movement um and physical well-being in, into these. Um, so the, the two tweaks are highlighted in yellow, both in terms of that stimulus funds and resilience plans. We're adding overall wellness there and then under the wellness specific bullet, um lower down on that same page, adding and physical wellness to the social, emotional and mental wellness. So those are the, the only tweaks uh that um that we made. And this really is a conversation, there, there is no vote. So what would, this is our guidance of um us uh describing to Dr. Morris what we expect to see in the goals that he will propose at our next meeting. Um, and so this is a conversation about what are, what are other tweaks or areas that we want to sort of make sure are included in, in the goals, superintendent goals for the year? So this document really is, um just to put a pin in it, is really a, a conversation starter, if you will, and a frame for that conversation to happen. Comments, thoughts? Mr. Demling?
Um, so I like the tweak to add overall wellness under the stimulus funds and resilience plans. I, I like the phrasing of contribute to a strong foundation for future years. You know, we have some Estor Fund opportunity to do that. And uh overall wellness is, is fairly broad, but, but it's, it's good in that it can, it can encompass things like athletics and the performing arts and, and other um, other things that contribute to, to overall well-being. So I, I like that one. Um. The um diversity, equity, inclusion, I, I, I like. Um, I, I don't know how to reword it, but I, I would love to um be able to articulate something about um create, establishing a continuity of reporting. I feel like we've gotten some great um presentations and, and one-time um delivery of, of, and whenever, whenever we've asked from them and, and Ms. Cunningham does an amazing job. Um, but when I think about, you know, could I easily answer the question about what's happened over the last three years? And what are the trends within certain, you know, things that we're tracking, whether it's staff, um uh diversity or um uh MCAS subgroup performance and whatnot, I, I struggle a little bit with, with pulling that together. Um, so some, something about, you know, creating a, a, a steady state structure, does this have to be the word? Um, where uh, you know, where we get a, we get a report back, you know, annually or, or however frequently we, we define uh where it's, it's an update on that, like that, that's, that's stable set of, of charts or numbers. So we can start, start to see the trends. Right? A, a little, a little more consistently. Um, and also communicate. And so part of that is, is for us to have a, a better understanding of, of changes over time in the school committee. But the other thing is, you know, we, the districts have done such a great job recently. I mean, the, um, I think Dr. Morris mentioned that um for the first time our hires were majority um employees who identified as people of color, which, which is amazing. And I think goes really unnoticed by a lot of the community just because we don't communicate it. And so I think part of this too is how do we establish not just regular reporting of our trends back to the committees that we can respond, but how do we uh report that to the community and, and publish it? So, so when there are positive changes, uh it's, it's easier to find, it's more well-known and, and people have a better understanding of, of where we're focusing our, our, our diversity and equity work.
I am, I really like that. What, what that, that brings to mind is sort of cr- creating a set of measures or markers, if you will, for us to track over time on sort of how we're doing um uh in, in this area. So um I know um that there used to be a, um, I don't know what it was called, climate survey, I, I, or sentiment, I'm not sure what they that was one way that we tracked it. I'm not, I'm not saying that that's what we should be doing. I'm just looking for what are some of the things that we want to be able to track and report on um in terms of how we're doing in terms of our diversity, anti-racism, um and, and equity within, within our schools. Um, I, I, I support that. I think that's a great suggestion, Mr. Demling. Other, um, other thoughts on this framework? I know we talked about this um last week, so I'm, I think uh it's really only on the tweaks. Okay. Ms. Stanser?
Um, I guess I would just say I look forward to seeing the goals that Dr. Morris presents to us.
Do you feel, Dr. Morris, that you have enough guidance um from, from this conversation and last week's conversation?
I do. Thank you very much. It's really helpful.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and next up, the school committee goals, which we had intended to talk about um two meetings ago. Um, and then when we rescheduled, when we added the, a meeting, we, we somehow, I forgot to add it back. So um, this is um our review of our conversations at the, at the retreat and some of the things that we wanted to focus on or talked about wanting to focus. Um, and sort of raising the question of whether um, whether we want to set goals for ourselves as a committee um that are, that are maybe connected to superintendent goals, but as a committee set goals um or not. And if, um and just start that conversation. The attachments in, in this agenda item that I added are, are literally just the photos of our big posters from, from the retreat. Um, and Ms. Lord helpfully transcribed all of those posters, um which is that last PDF that you see that says SC Retreat Post-it Notes. Um, and so that document is a transcription of, of the posters um of stickies. I included the posters just so we could remember where the, where, um, so for folks watching at home that didn't go back and, and read the, the minutes from our meeting, um the exercise after, after full discussion, um committee members went around with um red dots and, and voted, if you will, with the, with the dots on which ones of those they, um, we felt was really important and something we wanted to work on together as a committee this year. Um, so in that transcription that Ms. Lord pulled together, I added just yellow highlights for the areas where, where we had put where there was um a clustering of four or more of those red dots. And, and hopefully I captured them all. My, my family is, is in awe because I pasted them up all on, on the walls in our downstairs. Like, what, what is this? So um I can go back and check. Um, but that's with the, the yellow highlights. So um if you're looking at that document, under district priorities, we had, um, there was a cluster around addressing racism as a public health crisis and issue and increasing trauma-informed presence. Um, had, had a, had a cluster of interest um at our retreat. Um, we also had um a cluster of interest on the better use of our website, making it more intuitive to find information, um make our website more user-friendly, um and defining a district promotion strategy. Um, was, was sort of all a cluster on that one. Which relates to the di- district marketing. This one was one, um, it, we wanted a templated way for major decision-making and timeline. Um, so the, that first bullet of defining the issue, that, that was actually the, a suggestion on a, on a process. Um, there was a lot, actually, I think it was one of the biggest ones. I think there was like six or seven um red dots, if you will, on the public forums. So wanting to have much more regular, regular public forums um or office hours um to, for the community to connect um and voice uh feedback outside of our formal public comment and school committee meetings. Um, wanted more public dialogues, public for, budget forums, um and help folks um get to know us and what we do. Um, and then if you scroll all the way down, um, we had a lot of uh energy around how we onboard ourselves and, and new committee members um needing, you know, and wanting a guide for new members of the committees that we um talked about. Um, now, I, I don't want to say feeling lost and that. I don't think anybody, maybe somebody used those words, but sort of learning the ropes took time. Um, and so we wanted to sort of consider that, um including, I love the list of frequently used acronyms. Um, so, so those were the, those were the key areas where we, we're, we're, um during our retreats that we had sort of expressed a lot of energy and interest in, in maybe figuring out ways that we could tackle those this year. Um, and now I will stop talking. I did a lot of talking. So um any thoughts on, on that? Um, and, and thank you, Ms. Lord, for doing that transcription and, and snapping all those pictures and sharing them with us. That was super, super helpful. Mr. Stamo?
My, my one thought is if we, if we do decide to uh to tackle, take on any of these areas, we should narrow it to maybe two or maybe three at the most. That we, we can't approach all of these at once, in my opinion.
And, and you remind me, I think that's where we, where we, where our conversation ended during the retreat was like, wow, we generated a lot of ideas. We can't possibly do all of these. Mr. Demling, did you have your hand raised?
I think Miss Spitzer had her hand up first.
Sorry, Miss Spitzer?
Sure. I, I had a very similar comment, which was my concern that um even when we lead it down to what's highlighted, there are a lot of goals on here and some of them, like the public forums, I think, great idea, but all of this will require um time. Also making a guide, like it, it totally, we should do these things and we have very full schedules um already. Um, so I, I think if we could come up with like, I was even going to say like one that we target for this year and maybe another one that's on on the docket for the next year, like I'd feel good if we accomplished, I mean, some of them are smaller, but but like, creating a manual for new members, that's something that unfortunately I could see either falling on like, one person who takes it on and works a lot on it, maybe getting minimal feedback. But if all of us are going to be, I guess I'm just worried about the distribution of labor and making sure that it's equitable across the committee, and then also making sure that we don't bite off more than we can accomplish in one year.
Ms. Lord? You're muted, Ms. Lord. Mr. Harrington, were you signaling Ms. Lord, or? Other thoughts? I like that suggestion of I like the suggestion of maybe selecting one that we want to work on and do really well, as opposed to trying to bite off a lot and maybe not tackle, do well at any of those. Personally, I feel like the work that the budget subcommittee is doing in terms of figuring out ways to build in more community engagement at the beginning of the budget process, as well as towards the end, I think that is sort of already setting us into that direction of sort of more public forums. And that feels like one, I mean, just again, just the number of stickies, as well as the number of red dots there, that felt to me like one, that there was a lot of energy across the board for figuring out how to do that. So I think that would be my my vote would be in that direction, because I think that also is one that potentially the community, our communities and our public would feel and notice the most as well. But that's my, what are other folks' thoughts if we were to select one? Mr. Demling?
I mean, there's only forty or fifty bullets here. I say we just make them all superintendent goals, and then, you know, we're done, so. Have at it. No, so it is really, it is really frustrating to get so excited about all these awesome things that would be so great for the district, and then realize that we don't have an army of full-time, you know, thirty school committee members to go out and tackle it all. So I definitely think that the forums are something that we can, we can do. I mean, even at, like, if we spend the very minimal amount of time, we could do additional forums. It's just, you know, it's not a lot of preparation, I don't think. But that being said, I don't want to make it sound too easy, you know, it'll definitely require additional contribution from members. And, you know, not just the chair. The change process, one, is something that I would be willing myself just to take a stab at, just because it really lights my meta-geek change management process fire, so I would love to, you know, to see that. It seems like I could apply that to some things we've already done for like, test cases and whatnot, so I'd be willing to check that out. Yeah, it is really, I mean, I look at like, district marketing promotion strategy, like, we really need that in the competitive marketplace that we're in. But again, I don't know how to get that off the ground in a coordinated, practical way without, you know, without taking a leave of absence from my work. Yeah, I think we should, you know, in addition to the forums, if we had to do one, you know, if somebody is really jazzed up about running with one of these things, I think that's probably the best way to go. It's like, follow the momentum, right, that's already there. And there's a couple of things here too that we might be able to overlap with some efforts in some of our member towns, like addressing racism as a public health crisis issue, I know is a concern outside of, you know, just the school committee purview. So that might be something where we could collaborate with, say, town meetings or town councils or select boards or whatnot. Something so that, you know, we're not just taking the whole thing on ourselves.
Ms. Spitzer?
Kind of along those lines, I do feel like the increased trauma-informed present would actually align with some of the guidance that we were just looking at for the superintendent goals. I know Mr. Demling was joking somewhat, but I do think, at least in the ones that are under the district priorities, to the extent that they align with any of the superintendent's goals, it may be worth considering.
Any other thoughts? Seeing none. I'm happy to sort of take a stab at synthesizing this conversation and maybe distilling it down to a couple of things, sort of like just summarizing, and the points or the goals and how they're interacting with potential superintendent goals, as well as the, I like Mr. Demling's suggestion also of sort of follow the momentum. I like that framing of that sort of. That's typically how things get done, and we wouldn't be doing things unless somebody was jazzed to do them. So we have a treasure trove of ideas, so as we move forward throughout the year, we can sort of track and see, you know, where the energy is in terms of solving some of these. So I'll take a stab at sort of synthesizing that down to sort of the one-to-three items and how we might be addressing them, or already addressing them, and we can come back on that. Moving on to our next item, we have a first read of a policy, and just to read for folks, so again, in the interest of onboarding new members and explaining processes, we have our approach to crafting new policy is generally that the policy, the policy subcommittee will work with stakeholders to draft a policy and then bring it to the full committee. Sometimes the full committee will work on that and then direct, send it to the policy subcommittee for working. But generally, we don't vote on policy on a first read. We'll read, review the policy, and even if there's no edits and tweaks, we won't vote on it, and we'll come back on a second, a second read to vote on a policy. And the first read also enables us to get feedback from the full committee on any tweaks or edits or questions that then we would take to council or other internal stakeholders to sort of work through those. So this policy is on, it has a really descriptive, long name. And so to Dr. Morris's comment on the staff vaccine policy, it will need a name and letters, and so this does not yet have that. But it is a policy for contracting with vendors who are committed to cultural diversity. And this policy was requested, was developed and drafted with Assistant Superintendent Cunningham at her request, and then also has some input, I believe, from, yes, sorry, from our council, Mark Terry. And it's very small on my screen. I think I'll share my screen so that folks can follow along and see where we're looking. So as mentioned, the policy subcommittee has looked at this a couple of times, and you'll see sort of the tweaks that were made at suggestion of council, as well as the policy subcommittee. What this, just a general overview of this policy without going into the details of of the, I'm not going to read the whole policy, but what this is requiring, what this policy would require is that any vendor or other contractor that with whom the district works would be required to demonstrate the same commitment to cultural diversity that the district does. And the policy then outlines how is that, what is that that commitment that we're asking for, and how, what are the stipulations for that? It also enables us to sever or end a contract or relationship with a vendor or contractor if that, if they are not in compliance with that commitment to cultural diversity. Ms. Dancer, did you raise your hand?
No, I'm sorry, my computer just died, so I don't know what it showed up. Maybe it said I wanted to talk, but no.
Okay. Yeah, and I can't see everybody on screen when I'm sharing my screen here. Ms. Spitzer is the other policy, I think. Yeah, Mr. Sullivan is not here. Ms. Spitzer, did you have any comments that you wanted to add on the policy?
No, I think I would just highlight that it was something that was requested by Assistant Superintendent Cunningham, and so I think to the extent that we can support the district with this policy, it's a good thing.
Mr. Stammel?
You know, I think it's a great idea in theory and maybe in practice. I'm just wondering, does it, would it limit us? Would there be an issue if we're using a vendor or contractor who's been great but doesn't comply with this? Could it potentially lead to any limiting factors, you know, to hiring? I mean, I love the idea, I just.
Dr. Morris?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I don't think we should be working with vendors who can't provide a statement affirming their commitment to cultural diversity. I don't think this is an ask that's unreasonable for vendors that we work with, contractors that we work with. You know, in one of my other committees, I'm on the board, a school building board, and we have the same conversation about vendors in fields that historically have not been as attuned to diversity of gender, diversity of race. And when you're the one setting the bill and it's competitive process, people will rise to the challenge. This is a little different than our staffing situation, where we control things because it's ours, but I do think what we've seen in those fields, I've got eight applications for a building project, and all of them talk about diversity, and all of them highlight women and minority-owned businesses that are going to be part of the project. So I think if you set the standard, it's in everyone's best interest to work within that standard. And I think, you know, the language that I think has been edited is really helpful. You know, it puts emphasis on me and my professional judgment. If they're engaging context inconsistently, then I think, like, we shouldn't, you know, we should have some standards, and we will find vendors who do. This is not in response to having issues with vendors, and I think maybe that's something I should have said at the beginning. It's actually setting a standard by which our vendors, the majority of our vendors are already doing without us explicitly asking them. Because they know our community, they know our community's values, and they want to continue working with us. So for me, it's codifying something that we're doing perhaps less formally, and raising the stakes a bit for us to do it more formally in the future. And I appreciate the question, because I really thank the committee on multiple fronts tonight, as well as other nights, for asking like, this sounds great, can we actually do it, and how this is going to affect the operation of the district? Because that's, those are really important questions for a school committee, as a superintendent, so appreciate that.
Ms. Kenny?
Just for a little bit of background too, this is really common in state, places where state and federal money is concerned, to have some sort of requirement for vendors that hold certain certifications about having diversity within their company. So it's, I don't think having a policy like this would hinder or harm the district in any way.
Any other comments, questions, Mr. Demling?
So, yeah, I was going to say what Ms. Kenny said, this is not breaking tremendous ground. This is not amorous, like going off the deep end, right? This is very common, so I'm glad we're doing this. And just in terms of some of the language, so on number two, "The district shall strive to contract with businesses owned or led by culturally diverse individuals whenever possible, based on availability." Does that tie our hands too much? I mean, I understand we want to give a pretty strong directive that this is a priority for us, and so when you're looking for vendors, you want to seek them out, there are organizations that can refer you. You know, there's a lot you can do on the pool of vendors. And but say you get like ten vendors, and you want to go with one vendor, and they happen not to be the most diverse in their leadership of all the ten vendors, is that, does this language give you the freedom to decide what you think is best for the district, or is it, or is it too constraining?
Sorry, I lost my cursor. Dr. Morris?
Yeah, I think this really matches our commitment on our hiring process as well. We're always going to hire the best person who we think is going to do the best job for kids, but we're going to make sure our pool is as diverse as possible within the field. And we're also going to apply the standard practices that we have in our hiring process, which emphasizes not being biased by, you know, factors that many of us have. So for me, I think we've been successful, like I mentioned, you mentioned before, actually, over fifty percent of our new hires, something that we shared earlier, were identified as people of color, that still means that like forty-seven percent were not identifying as people of color. And I see this work as being similar, where it emphasizes both deepening the pool, it emphasizes, especially because we're talking about contractors, that whether it's, you know, phrasing women or minority-owned business, not my phrase, but it's kind of the phrase in the field, but also that they employ a diverse, there's diversity within their staff, and that that's a factor that we care about. Doesn't preclude us at all from hiring a firm that may have that factor and strengthen that factor, but in other ways, we feel like ill-prepared for the job. So I see it as very similar to how we approach our hiring of our professional staff, which doesn't preclude us from hiring the best person regardless of some demographic factors. Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, so we will come back at a future meeting for a second read and possible vote on this policy. And which brings us, which is a nice segue into the next item on our agenda, which is future agenda planning. We have, I'm happy to share this document so folks can see. Whoops. So this is our agenda planning document, so our next meeting is October 12th. And that is, at that meeting, we will be discussing the, well, pending any of our towns, so Amherst deciding to move sixth grade to the middle school, we'll be continuing that discussion and taking a potential vote on accepting sixth grade into the middle school. We'll hear a draft of superintendent goals. We'll review the fourth quarter 2020, 2021 budget, so last school year, fiscal year. We'll be looking at contract extension for UFCW. I believe we've already tackled school committee subcommittees, so we probably can take that off. And APAA. So editing live. And then there's also a topic, potentially, the NEASC, which is an organization that reviews and that reviews and accredits high schools. And so there's a discussion potentially on the 12th on that for ARHS. Potentially at that one, we can also come back on this topic of the school committee goals as well. Are there other items that we're missing? Not seeing any. So as always, if anything comes up in between that you, like, in this moment, you were not able, you forgot a comment that, a topic, feel free to email me, and we can figure out when we can add that to our agenda. Any other thoughts before we move on? Next up, we have a warrant report. So Ms. Spitzer reviews our warrants and approves them. Do you have any to report today?
I do. Just one. So I carry Spitzer authorized by my signature to pay bills in the amount of $152,729.50 for the warrant dated September 24, 2021. This included general fund expenses of $137,873.51 revolving fund expenses of $2,265, and grant fund expenses of $12,590.99. I signed this on September 26, 2021.
Thank you. And next up is gifts, and I don't believe we have any gifts this evening, so we will now move on. We will now, I believe, is this the language, Dr. Morris, for that? So I will now move that we that we enter executive session in accordance with the open meeting log, MGLC 30A, Section 21A, for the purpose of approving minutes only, with no intention of returning to open session. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by McDonald and seconded by Spitzer. And we will now move to a roll call vote. Mr. Demling?
Demling, aye.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, aye.
Ms. Kenny?
Kenny, aye.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, aye.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, aye.
Mr. Stammel?
Stammel, aye.
Ms. Dancer?
Dancer, aye.
And McDonald, aye. Thank you, and we will adjourn into executive session now. Thank you, Amherst Media.